The National Anthem will wait for the regular council agenda. So I'll call this meeting to order, the organizational meeting of council. Any additions to the agenda? No, seeing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Bossert, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Item number four, approval of the 2016 meeting schedule, Counselor Schuler.
Thank you. The following schedule is being proposed for meetings listed below. Regular meeting in council every 13th week, normally at 9:00 a.m., following on a Wednesday. Government's priorities committee, Wednesday normally starting at 9:00 a.m., with the exception of the week of regular council meeting, regular meeting of council. The afternoon of the regular council meeting, normally a Wednesday, and no management meetings following the week of a regular meeting of council. Other committees and boards having council representation may set their own times to meet as they deem necessary, and those councillors involved will be notified accordingly. I therefore move that council approve the attached 2016 schedule for council slash committee meetings as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Long.
Just to reference the management meetings at the bottom there should be governance of priorities meeting.
Yes.
On the final thing, just for clarification.
In the motion, you mean?
It's not in the motion, I don't think, but just as in the information attached.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The third point under is there's no management meetings following the next of regular meeting of council.
Oh, yeah, no, you're absolutely right. That's a throwback to days of yore. You're absolutely right. So Madam Secretary, I'll ask that you change that word "management" to governance and priorities. It's a, we'll treat it as a typographical error. Anything further? All right, we have a motion before us, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Item five, approval of council committee appointments. That is Counselor Fredrickson.
The distributed list of standing committees of council is presented for review and appointment of council representatives and alternates to each of these committees. It should be noted that a resolution was passed at the May 17, 2000, regular meeting of council stating that the mayor may designate any member of council to attend any committee meeting and vote on behalf of the town. This resolution was passed to ensure that all committee meetings have a member of the Drayton Valley Town Council present and capable of voting on behalf of the town. Rare instances do arise where both the appointed representative and the alternate are unable to attend a meeting. Once approved, the list of committee appointments will be forwarded to the applicable organizations as well as advertised in the newspaper. Therefore, I move that council approves the appointment of the distributed list of council members and alternates to the standing committees of the Drayton Valley Town Council as presented, taking into consideration that the mayor can designate any member of council to attend any committee meeting and vote on behalf of the town.
Thank you, Counselor Fredrickson. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification on the difference between the Housing Committee joint and the Housing Authority joint. What's the difference?
Is that a question for Administration?
I would guess.
Mr. Streason?
I also had a look at the list, and I also had the same question, so I thought it was a directive from council, so I really don't have an answer on this one.
Counselor Bossert.
This committee list was made prior to our last joint housing strategy meeting, and at that joint strategy meeting, we had come to the conclusion that the Joint Housing Committee and the Housing Authority Committee would be stood down per se, but not necessarily deleted. So they were two different committees. One was a joint committee with Breton and Brazu County. The other one was a committee to help investigate the formation of a housing authority. So it's council's pleasure to leave them as standing committees that are, at this time, not active or to have them deleted.
Anything further on this? Counselor Wheeler.
Maybe I should just scroll down, but didn't we have our own housing com--?
Yes.
Okay, there it is, an internal one.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Are we all right? Anything further? No? Okay. So those two committees that Counselor Bossert identified will be essentially inactive until such time as external parties are interested in joint initiatives and, of course, the town as well. So we have a motion before us. If there's no further discussion, well, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And item six, appointment of deputy mayor, Counselor Long.
Thank you. The position of deputy mayor for the town of Drayton Valley is filled on a rotating basis for a term of eight months, with the upcoming term running from November 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016. In the past, the order of rotation was based on the number of votes each councillor received in the election in descending order as follows. That was councillor Nicole Naro, November 1, 2013, to June 30, 2014; councillor Graham Long, July 1, 2014, to February 28, 2015; councillor Dean Schuler, from March 1, 2015 to October 31, 2015; councillor Farrell Wheeler, from November 1, 2015, to June 30, 2016; councillor Deb Bossert, from July 1, 2016, to February 28, 2017; and finally, councillor Brandy Fredrickson, from March 1, 2017, all the way to October 31, 2017. So council is being asked to appoint councillor Farrell Wheeler as the next deputy mayor. So I move that council approve the appointment of councillor Farrell Wheeler as deputy mayor for the town of Drayton Valley for the period of November 1, 2015, to June 30, 2016.
Thank you very much, Counselor Long. Any discussion on this motion? Just a comment, I expect it'll be a thrill a minute. Counselor Schuler, you may have some insight.
Yeah, I just want to say that the last eight months have been very enjoyable, and I thank you for your guidance during that time, and I look forward to Counselor Wheeler taking over on November 1, and I know she'll do a very good job, so.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. As I've reiterated a number of times throughout this term, the role of deputy mayor has become rather more important, and that is by design. It is intended to develop capacity within council, and I'm delighted at the uptake and the enthusiasm that all deputy mayors have shown to date, and thank you, Counselor Schuler, for the last eight months of your service in that regard. So we have a motion before us, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Counselor Long, all in favor? That is carried. All right, we will move in to the regular council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, and are we ready for the National Anthem? I'll ask everyone to please rise for the singing of our National Anthem. Please be seated. All right, any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Counselor Schuler, all in favor? That is carried. Item 3.0, corrections or amendments to the October 7, 2015, regular meeting in council minutes? Counselor Long.
Just the one that I noticed on page eight, it's Resolution 250-215. It says Bob Parker rather than Bob Barker. It should be Barker with a B rather than Parker with a P.
You're absolutely right. We'll take that as a typographical error. Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the CSRO position at the second paragraph on page four out of 10, it says, "Explained that this numbers are based on the split between the town and county." It should be that these numbers.
Yes.
And the next paragraph, it says that the program would be managed by county officers, and that at this point, or in these minutes, should have read county administration, not officers.
Yes.
And I did have one other one. There it is. 10.1 with planning and development. Mr. Fraser introduced Mr. Shaheed as "the new" planning and development manager, so we're missing the word "the." And on the 43rd extension, 43rd Street extension, which is just a couple points down on the next page, it says that the water line is put in and the road will be closed next week for work on, for, sorry, next week for a day for storm line work, as opposed to works, and the site will stay in dirt stage and be completed at the end of October. So there's just a few words either missing or pluralized that shouldn't be. I think that was all that I had found. So just typographical errors.
I appreciate you making our minutes grammatically sound as well. And I do mean that sincerely. I can usually count on that.
You mean the word "expenditure."
Yeah. No worries. All right. Anything further by way of corrections or amendments? All right, I'll take a motion to adopt the October 7, 2015, regular meeting in council minutes as amended. Counselor Long, all in favor? That is carried. All right, item 5.0 is public time, a section of the agenda where the public has the opportunity to bring questions or concerns to our attention that may not otherwise be on our agenda. Any such questions, concerns? Doesn't look like it. All right, item 6.0, decision items. Counselor Bossert, item 6.1, memorandum of understanding with Parkland County.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town of Drayton Valley has been exploring opportunities between the Clean Energy Technology Center, the CETC, and Parkland County. Parkland County has recently toured the CETC facility, currently under construction, and has worked closely with Administration to discover opportunities for collaboration in the Parkland County region and at the CETC. In order for the relationship between both bodies to, sorry, both parties to successfully develop into collaborative projects, it was agreed that a memorandum of understanding would be created. Today, the attached memorandum of understanding is being presented to the town council for adoption. Furthermore, Parkland County Mayor, council, and CAO will be present today in council chambers to sign and finalize the MOU. Therefore, I move that council approve the memorandum of understanding between Parkland County and the town of Drayton Valley for the Clean Energy Technology Center.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? No? Sorry, Counselor Fredrickson.
Not necessarily a discussion, just a comment that I just wanted to commend our Administration for seeking out a county partner to work alongside us with the CETC, as well as seeing the benefits of working together and going along as per the direction of the province as collaboration, et cetera. So I'm very happy to hear what's going to come out of the town of Drayton Valley and Parkland County partnership, and I think this is a great, great step for the CETC.
Thank you, Counselor Fredrickson. I echo those comments, there's really nothing more I could say. It's very encouraging development. Anything further? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Item 6.2, Counselor Wheeler, CETC-designated officer bylaw.
Thank you. The town of Drayton Valley has created a new Clean Energy Technology Center. This center will be ready in January of 2016 to serve the community in industry needs in education and skills training, business incubation, innovation and entrepreneurship, technology development, applied research, research, search, and commercialization. Council has therefore decided to ensure that the asset and development is appropriately managed. Therefore, the position of chief operating officer, known as the COO, is designated to serve the needs of this facility. Attached for council's approval is a copy of the position description, as well as a bylaw establishing the COO as the designated officer of the municipality. Therefore, I move council approve the position description as attached.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. We have a new word now. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. I move that council give first reading to Clean Energy Technology Center-designated bylaw officer, officer bylaw, sorry, 2015-13A.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Counselor Wheeler.
I move that council give second reading to Clean Energy Technology Center-designated bylaw, oops, I say that every time, officer bylaw, 2015-13A.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Counselor Wheeler.
I move that council consider giving third and final reading to Clean Energy Technology Center-designated officer bylaw, 2015-13A.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler, and of course, procedurally, I'll just make note, in order to give all three readings to a bylaw in one session, the, there must be a vote to consider giving third and final reading. So any discussion on this motion? All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. I move that council give third and final reading to Clean Energy Technology Center-designated officer bylaw, 2015-13A.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Fredrickson, you've been keeping your powder dry.
Again, not necessarily a discussion, just more of a comment that, that for those people who are watching and are reading our agendas, that this, this position is an integral piece to the CETC and to the Biomile, bringing that forward and diversifying our economy. So this is a very important position, and I'm glad that this council has been able to discuss on this position and, and see it come into fruition.
Thank you, Counselor Fredrickson. It is, as you pointed out, integral to the proper functioning of the CETC and Biomile, and organizationally very important. So any further discussion, comments? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Item 6.3, Counselor Schuler, road closure bylaw.
Thank you. Administration is proposing a road closure bylaw for the lands within Northwest 8, 49, 7, west of the 5th, due to the realignment of Highway 22 and 50th Avenue. The lands currently exist as portions of six different registered road parcels. The attached road closure bylaw has been prepared with the assistance of Alberta Land Surveyors so that the portions of land no longer required for a road right-of-way can be legally closed as roads can then be consolidated to create a single parcel of land. By creating the single parcel of land, the town then has options regarding its future use. Options include the sale of the land or establishing as reserved land for municipal use. First reading of the road closure bylaw, 2014-11D, was given by council on November 19, 2014, following a public hearing held on January 28, 2015, wherein no objections were noted. The bylaw has, was presented to the Minister of Infrastructure and Transportation. The bylaw has received ministerial approval as of October 5, 2015, and is presented to council today for second and third readings. As no concerns were raised during the public hearing held earlier this year or from the Minister of Transportation, Administration recommends giving second and third readings to road closure bylaw, 2014-11D. So I therefore move that council give second reading to road closure bylaw, 2014-11D.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Bossert.
It's good to see this bylaw come forward again from the Minister of Transportation. This is a piece of land that the town actually owns, and it's not being utilized currently, so I'm looking forward to this closure and allowing us to develop that piece of property or sell it and just make it a viable piece of real estate here in our community.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Any, anything further? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Counselor Schuler.
Thank you. I move that council give third reading to road closure bylaw, 2014-11D.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. Any discussion, comments? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. 6.4, Counselor Fredrickson, home business license.
Administration has received an application for a barbering home occupation to be operating at 5203 44th Avenue. The applicant has stated that there will be a five to eight, there'll be five to eight clients per day between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. by appointment only, Monday through Friday. Parking will be provided to the east of the property in front of the detached garage as attached. The landowner has authorized this business operation. The applicant will not be doing any development to the building, therefore the development permit is not required. The lands are currently zoned R1A, low-density residential district, which a barbering home occupation is neither a permitted nor discretionary use, therefore council approval is required. Referral letters were sent to adjacent landowners within 100-meter radius. No comments or concerns were raised. The application for the operations of the proposed barbering occupation is hereby presented to council for decision. Administration recommends approving business license number 4113 with the standard conditions as well as the special conditions noted in the attached information page, and the following are options. So therefore, I move that council approve business license number 4113 for proposed barbering home business located at 5203 44th Avenue with conditions recommended by Administration.
As attached.
Sorry, as attached.
All right. Any discussion on this motion? Shaheed, did you have--
Yeah, I would like to mention some conditions for, because if it's approved, then be approved subject to some conditions, and the conditions are that the home occupation will not create any nuisance parking issue or a door or smoke. And number two, I mean, the parking is to be limited to, within the driveway, and it will also subject to approval of a licensed officer and approval and inspection by health authority. That's a key conditions for approval.
Great, thank you very much. Anything further on this? All right, we have a motion before us, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Item 6.5, Counselor Long, Brazos Seniors Foundation Board appointment.
Thank you. It's been the practice for town council to appoint the town member-at-large to serve on the Brazos Seniors Foundation Board, along with a member of council. Jeanette Vatter has shown her dedication to serving this board for many years, including several of those years as its chair. Administration received Mrs. Vatter's application to renew her appointment to the Brazos Seniors Foundation Board and recommends that council approve this appointment for a period of two years, that would be to October 31, 2017. Therefore, I move that council approve the appointment of Jeanette Vatter as the town of Drayton Valley member-at-large for the Brazos Seniors Foundation for a term of two years ending October 31, 2017.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Schuler.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to see this appointment. Jeanette has been an integral part of Brazu Seniors for a number of years, and she's probably one of the most knowledgeable people we have in regards to this committee. She has, serves as chair for a good many number of years, and continues to do, you know, that job in a very acceptable fashion. I'm glad to see that we're appointing this for a two-year term, and I hope council, you know, looks at it, since we are having a change as a council member, you know, from a council perspective, that if it's all possible, we don't change the two in the same year. So just something to keep in mind going forward that, you know, that we have some continuity going, you know, going forward that way, because it's, it's a committee that takes quite a bit to actually understand how things work. It's a committee that has a lot of different parts to it, and generally, it'll take someone at least a year to figure it out, so it's, and I just hope that we can make sure that we don't make a change of both our member-at-large and our council member on the same year, so I'm happy to see this.
Thank you, thanks very much for your comments. Anything further? Counselor Fredrickson.
I just echo Counselor Schuler's comments. I had the opportunity to meet with Mrs. Vatter last week, and she is definitely a wealth of knowledge with regards to Brazu Seniors, not necessar, not in just how it runs, but also the history of it and how it's evolved, et cetera. So I'm glad to see this appointment as well.
Yes, Jeanette has certainly served the community in a variety of capacities, this being one of them over the years, and we're lucky to have her. Any, anything further on this? Nope, all right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Item 6.6, Counselor Bossert, Housing Committee Terms of Reference.
Thank you, Your Worship. The town of Drayton Valley is desirous of addressing housing needs through the exploration of various projects, programs, and initiatives. Recent work with the village of Breton and Brazu County through the Joint Housing Committee has determined that, for the present time, each municipality will be pursuing independent initiatives. In order to pursue, pursue these various initiatives, the town of Drayton Valley requires the formation of a housing committee. The housing committee will be charged to work with the appropriate town administration to research, develop, and/or facilitate viable housing initiatives that will achieve the town of Drayton Valley's goal to create a mixed, a mix of entry-level and rental homes for low-to-moderate income earners. The town council is being requested to approve the attached terms of reference. Therefore, I move that council, that town council approve the housing committee terms of reference as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert, and just for clarity, I'll add, or at least I hope it's clarity, that this committee is an internal committee of council as opposed to the other two that were referred to earlier in the organizational meeting, which involved external parties and are now inactive. So essentially, this committee facilitates the ongoing work and attention that the town is paying to the housing issue. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Six point seven, Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. It has come to the attention of administration that the appointment of Kathy Howe to the Mayor's Advisory Committee was approved for a period ending October thirty-first two thousand and fifteen. In keeping with the initial appointments for Mayor's Advisory Committee members, including the individual Ms. Howe was assigned to replace, the actual term should end October thirty-first two thousand and sixteen. Ms. Howe has agreed to extend her term to October thirty-first two thousand and sixteen, and administration is recommending that council approve the extension. Therefore, I move that council approve the extension of the term of Kathy Howe's appointment to the Mayor's Advisory Committee to October thirty-first two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Six point eight, Counselor Schuler.
Thank you, Worship. Town administration has been working to attract industry and innovative projects for development at the Clean Energy and Technology Center. Through the ongoing relationship with ISL Engineering and Land Services Limited and the construction of the new water treatment facility, administration was introduced to Metal Boss Technologies, Inc. ISL Engineering and Land Surveys Limited have experienced a need to enhance operators' training for such a project. Metal Boss Technology, Inc.'s vision is to understand the impact of developments and the effects it has on the water system, as well as the effects of contaminants, including contaminants of emerging concerns such as pharmaceuticals, nanoparticles, et cetera. The completion of the new water treatment plant and the location of Drayton Valley allow for an opportunity to enhance training of skilled workers as well as look at ways to advance water and wastewater treatment by creating a Center for Water Intelligence, or CWI. The purpose of CWI will be to commercialize applied research and new innovative technology in the fields of water and wastewater treatment. The CWI will serve as a creative center in Alberta where industry and academic partnerships are made with a common goal advancing the practical application, i.e. commercialization, of innovative technologies that have the ability to enhance the intelligence via education, training, and technology of water and wastewater treatment operators, regulators, engineers, excuse me, technologists, industry partners, government, and the general public for the betterment of public health, environmental quality, and long-term water resource sustainability for generations to come. Therefore, three partners have agreed to work together through a memorandum of understanding. The MOU has received legal review and corrections have been made in the attached document. ISL Engineering and Land Services Limited and Metal Boss Technologies, Inc. have reviewed the changes, and no further revisions have been made by either party. I therefore move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Drayton Valley, ISL Engineering and Land Services Limited, and Metal Boss Technologies.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Fredrickson.
I just have a question that I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So in the third last paragraph regarding intellectual property rights, I'm just wondering, am I right in reading this that the beneficial rights and the subsequent agreements of other parties, namely Town of Drayton Valley, would be included in that, and their interest supersedes the ownership intellectual property rights of MT and ISL?
I'm going to wade into that because my concerns with the previous incarnations of this document surrounded the wording in that paragraph, and then I'll let Mr. Deal comment as well. When you say supersede, that's not the word I would use. What I would say is that this paragraph appropriately recognizes that all the parties, including the Town of Drayton Valley, have an inherent interest in intellectual property that may be created as a result of this partnership, and subsequent agreements will be intended and designed to flesh out what that relative interest is. But the important acknowledgement in this paragraph is that the Town of Drayton Valley has an interest in any intellectual property created. Now, Mr. Deal, do you have anything to add to that?
I can't add anything. You've covered very well.
Counselor Fredrickson, does that address your question?
It does.
You have another question? Sure.
So any intellectual property that would come out of this agreement, then, would be looked at in terms of agreement creation and from there? I'm just wondering, investment-wise or economically, then, would the town be considered in that so that we are getting some money back out of these agreements?
The subsequent agreements that are referred to in this paragraph will outline in detail the relative intellectual property interest of each of the parties, and as a result, the, what was the word you used, payback or something like that? Yeah, so it would outline that as well. It will also outline any required capital infusion required to develop that intellectual property. So can't have your cake and eat it too, but it's, that's the purpose of the subsequent agreements referred to. And that's not unusual. In fact, is the norm in my understanding in relation to MOUs of this type. There are always subsequent agreements which will provide detail to specific circumstances as they evolve.
Anything further? Go to Counselor Bossert and then Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to acknowledge the fact that the Town of Drayton Valley is currently privileged to have a number of groups and entities coming forward to work with us with MOUs. And an MOU is basically an invitation to explore possibilities between the Town of Drayton Valley and another entity. And to me, that says that other groups, such as Metal Boss and ISL and Parkland County, find what we're doing in this community worth their interest. And we also have other MOUs signed that say the same thing, that Town of Drayton Valley is doing something worth looking into and something worth partnering with, and that, to me, is very encouraging as the community continues to attempt in diversifying our economy. These types of MOUs help us to explore those opportunities, and I'm very encouraged by the two MOUs that are before us this morning.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. When we talk about the party roles and responsibilities and what each them will be in charge of, I guess, or dealing with, the Town of Drayton Valley under number two will be responsible for providing access to its operational staff to participate, and it does say within reasonable limits, but I'm just wondering who's actually responsible for that? Who's overseeing the operational staff?
Our town engineer would be responsible for that.
Any further questions? All right, thank you very much. We'll call a question. All in favor? That is carried. Moving on, we're going at a blistering pace. Item seven point O, Department Reports. Seven point one, Planning and Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since October seventh, two thousand and fifteen, PND has issued eight development permits and seven business licenses. Eight development permits includes duplex with basement suite, bringing housing star to thirty-three for the year, outdoor ring with storage shed, commercial interior renovations to RCP, RCMP detachment, tree removal and site clearing to Highland Plaza divisions, and the last one is three fascia signs and one temporary portable sign. And seven business licenses include four out-of-town businesses, one change of location, J and A Trucking moving to WC Industrial Park subdivisions, Crown and Dagger Pub and Grill located in Caesarin, Organic Solution located at forty-nine-zero-one-fifty-five Street down by Tri Electric. They specialize in organic house and body produce. And for your information, I would like to mention Pembina Papeland has applied for their building permits, so construction is anticipated commence within the next couple of weeks. Ironwood Gates condo behind the Holiday Inn is finalizing the interior of the units and is hoping for partial occupancy within a month. As the council has probably noticed, that there is a construction happening to seven-eleven. They are doing as interior renovation as well as constructing an addition to the east of the building for prep cooking. Thanks.
I have a question for you, Shaheed. You identified that we issued seven new business licenses?
Yes.
In the last month, is it?
Within these three weeks, since October seventh.
From the last council meeting. And four of those are out-of-town businesses. By that, you mean that the business had its genesis from outside our borders?
It's like, not local people.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, good. Thank you very much. We'll move on to engineering, transportation, and sustainability. Ron.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just a very quick update on the projects. Forty-third Avenue, they've put the water line in, and they've made the cut across the ring road for the storm line, and they patched that up, and the intent is to pave it before winter sets in. The balance of the work, which would be the gravel and the pavement on forty-third Ave, will be done next year. Braun Drive, everything's done on that except the sidewalk to be done next year. Beckett Drive, the work is complete there. The Aurora School, the fence is complete. We have, we had to do some hydrovacation and reapply back to ATCO to satisfy their requirements to complete the roadwork, so that will not really be complete this year, I anticipate, because it's probably going to take a few weeks for ATCO to approve the next stage. However, it can be used all winter in its current state. The CETC, we're going to be putting in the pavement access shortly into the building and paving the parking lot, and work will be done on the landscaping there. The bus hub was complete on October fourteenth. The Howard Pickup Park is, we've pretty much finished the work we're going to do this year. A contract is going out to complete the work next year with topsoil-ing and trails and so forth.
I just want to add on that. We're not calling it anything, least of all HW Pickup Park. The name hasn't been determined yet. Thanks.
Got it. Okay. Fifty-second Street paving is complete. The water treatment plant, as we know, the plant's complete. The landscaping is pretty much complete. The walkways are in place with chips. We still have to do the fence around the water treatment plant, a new gate, and some lighting for the building. Sixty-second Street project is on hold. The county has advised they're not going to pay their fifty percent, or not at least this year, for work on Sixty-second Street. I went to meet with them to get confirmation whether or not we had the funding to proceed, and their director, Winston Rousseau there, he advised that it had been discussed, but the Brazzo County had never actually approved the funding, so...
All right, which part of Sixty-second Street are you referring to?
We were looking at the intersection of Sixty-second Street and Fifty-second Avenue to do signals this year and to do some improvements up on Sixty-second Street, probably up to the Walmart access, Power Center Boulevard. But both those projects are kind of in question because they haven't really committed to paying the fifty percent, right?
Do we have that in writing?
I have, I have an email from him, from Winston, on that, yeah, because I put that question right to them.
All right.
Twenty-sixth Avenue, that project's pretty well on hold because we haven't made any traction whatsoever yet with the landowner for, and it may become less of a need with proposed improvements we're planning to do to connect to the ring road anyway. It's probably something that can be deferred for a number of years, anyway. And the Cooley Road erosion, because I had some concerns, like we got grant funding for the bus hub, and I think it was Beckett Road and Cooley Road, I was concerned about the cost on the bus hub, so I actually deferred the work on the Cooley Road this year because I had concerns that the bus hub might go over, and it looks like it is going to go over slightly, but not as bad as I thought it was going to. And I think the Cooley Road is something that we can defer anyway. It's erosion control work on the Range Road seventy-three there.
Very good. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Community Services and FCSS, Mr. Driesen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to comment and thank the staff underneath the Community Services as well as River Valley players for the hosting of the Halloween Haunted House, which was held just last weekend, of course, not wanting to interfere with the real antics that will happen this weekend, I'm sure. But we had close to thirteen-hundred people go through the Halloween Haunted House, so great attendance, and of course, it is also an opportunity for Community Services to showcase a lot of the social service and community service agencies to the community. Our Recreation Culture Master Plan underway. We're working with the cultural groups. We will be meeting with them November the fourth in the evening with our consultant just to start the legwork on the cultural strategy, so having a very specific focus group happening that evening. I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, you'll probably comment about November third. Global is coming up to do a visit and speak to the, and want to get some information on the homelessness and poverty reduction work that is happening within our community. And lastly, very quickly, just in terms of one final comment, just want to recognize Lola Stran. She is a recipient of a two thousand and fifteen FCSS Association of Alberta Award of Merit, so we congratulate her for that.
Thank you very much. Seven point four, Emergency Services. Anything? I guess Tom's not here. So, seven point five, Legislative Services. Nothing. Economic Development? Eric.
Good morning. I just wanted to highlight that the Chamber of Commerce will be beginning a strategic planning process this evening, starting at five to seven at the MAC Center, so all businesses are encouraged to attend. That's expected to be a three-part process that's going to be facilitated by the province of Alberta's Community Development Officer. Also, we have an economic development open house being hosted at the Mackenzie Center next Tuesday, November third, from seven to nine PM.
That's it? Any questions? Counselor Bossert.
Good morning, Eric. Just wanted to let you know, myself and my daughter, as self-employed small business owners, got your email yesterday. as self-employed small business owners, got your email yesterday and that my daughter, as a young businessperson in the community, was very excited to receive the email and to receive invitations to come to some of these events, the workshop in particular. She wants to know what's going on in the community as far as ACTC is concerned, and she wants to be involved. So the sending out of emails to all small business owners, I don't know who all got them, but just wanted to let you know at least one person is excited about it.
Well, I'm very excited to hear that. And so thanks for that feedback. And I do think that we're going to see a lot of momentum build very quickly because we got a lot of exciting initiatives. So I'm very much looking forward to connecting with the community.
Anything further? Thanks very much. All right. Communications and marketing, Tyler?
There we go. Budget consultation is done for two thousand fifteen. We're going to start planning for the next one for two thousand sixteen, seventeen, in the new year. That's all I have to report.
All right. Very succinct. Thank you. Information Services, Mr. Naidu.
Your worship, working with our town engineer, we have, we've been working on getting the best options for expansion of our intake system at the water plant, pump house, and supply line. So I think in a few weeks, you will be getting a full report from our town engineer. But I think we're pretty close to see where we're going and what's the best option for the town. And same, we're looking at some technologies for the sewer plant so we don't have to spend the money what we initially were looking at. So there will be some options being looked at. And I'm sure you'll be, you'll get this information in the coming weeks. But that's what we worked on the last little while. Meetings with Northwest are going very well. The interesting thing is that two thousand seventeen, we will have a conference, international conference here at the CETC, and which will take in First Nations, which will talk about the social importance of CETC, not only in terms of technical stuff into the, you know, bioenergy. Of course, there'd be bioenergy and biomile. Now, this is being worked on by the Northwest. We're working with them, but their research department is doing this conference organization. It's going to have, take the students from K to twelve sector, and there'll be science fair. And they will be, kids will be involved in innovation and what's happening, the kids around the world, how they can, you know, take part into developing new technologies and social sciences and things like that. There will be industrial tours around this area, including the oil and gas and forestry and agriculture. So it's going to be a collaborative approach. They are working with the, to get the funds from the federal level. And so it's quite exciting. And the reason I'm, you're saying it's two thousand seventeen. Why are you telling us now? Because you should know that we're going to start working on this and you will be part of that whole conference and be a big thing for our town. And that's one thing. And the other good news, and after that, I'll be quiet, is the kitchen equipment is ordered for the CETC. And so I think we'll be able to not only work for the hospitality industry, but I think even for what PCN was going to do for, you know, diabetic patients or for the health reasons, this kitchen can be used also. And we can have some food shows down there for the community. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Council reports, eight point one, Counselor Long?
Thank you. I love going first. October eighth, we had a, the library board had a joint meeting with the Brazos County Library Board to look at the development of a plan of service, which essentially sets out the priorities for the library for the coming three years. That's a facilitated thing by somebody out of Yellowhead, I think. So we'll be advancing over the coming months, I suspect, but looking good there. On the fifteenth, of course, we had the second annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I was delighted to be able to attend and to act as master of ceremony. It's a little sleepy at seven thirty in the morning, but it's, it's an event I've come to enjoy over the two years. There's a really positive vibe in the community around it, and there's breakfast. So it's a win-win. Later that day and the following day, as everybody here knows, we had back-to-back budget sessions. Not much to comment on there, except I would like to thank administration for, I thought we were very well organized this year and everything went as smoothly as can reasonably be expected. So that's an ongoing process, of course, so we're not quite done yet, but we'll see what comes. On the nineteenth, Yellowhead Regional Library Board, working on its own strategic plan. So spent a sort of three-quarters of a day there. And interestingly, see, that's the body that provides a lot of services that our library itself then uses. So good to see what's coming there. The main thing is that they've undertaken, I think I mentioned this last time, they will not be increasing their rate that they charge us for the coming year. So good news there. It's a per capita, it's four dollars and a few cents. So great bargain, I think we get out of those guys. On the twentieth, along with the rest of council, we met with Wildrose School Division. And we've also, on the twenty-sixth, and sometime earlier in the month, and I couldn't find the date, had back-to-back, not back-to-back, two CETC meetings for the CETC committee. Some of the fruits of our labors you see in front of you today. So I won't say anything else, I suspect Counselor Schuler may. But very happy to see some of the things moving forward, particularly with Portland County. Those partnerships are important and it's great to see somebody enthusiastic, somebody who gets it. So with that, I will end my report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Schuler?
Thank you. Just touch on a, on a couple things. October eighth, we did have a joint housing committee. Yeah, let's call it a meeting. Where basically between Brazos County, the Village of Breton, and Town of Drayton Valley, we've determined that we're on very different steps when it comes to housing. And because of that, we've decided at this point not to proceed with the joint committee. Not saying that it may not reconvene at some point in future, but for now, we feel that there's enough difference between what each community is looking at, that we're going to proceed on our own. Attended the prayer breakfast on October fifteenth, as Counselor Long pointed out. I was, I was very pleased with it. I thought the turnout was decent and it was nice to see, you know, the different faiths coming together and, and, you know, having that breakfast and mingling. And it was, it was nice to see. Also, on the fifteenth, besides budget, we had Brazu Seniors Foundation, my last official meeting for Brazu Seniors Foundation. And I am sad to leave that committee because I do enjoy it, but I know it's going to good hands and we'll move forward. We did approve budget for the coming year. And just a note that requisitions will not be changing from previous years. So there will be no increase in requisitions to the taxpayers from Brazu Seniors. Been able to hold the line on everything there. October twentieth, just we had a meeting with the Wildrose School Division. And that was, that was, I thought it was a good meeting. It highlighted the cooperation that we've had with each other and, you know, the positive nature of that. So it was, it was good to see. And then on October twenty-sixth, CETC, as Counselor Long indicated, the MOUs that we have, as been stated, are very encouraging. There's so many different organizations wanting to work with us. And I find that, that, very, very encouraging that, you know, after the length of time that we've had trying to move the CETC forward, that we're finally gaining some traction. And, you know, things are going to start to move ahead, I think, in a lot of respects, very quickly. It would be nice if our neighbors in Brazos County would, would see the benefits of the CETC as other municipalities and organizations have and, you know, come forward and work with us. And I'm hoping that in future, they will, they'll realize that and, and come forward. And I think that's about all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. Starting off the month, we had an Internet of Things meeting with administration on our side and talked about the benefits and what they'd like to see and kind of compiled a list. So combining it with some of council's ideas of what would be good to move forward with. We've worked with Telus and IBM, so they will be coming back to us with a more compiled and shortened list of what they think will suit Drayton Valley best. So we look forward to that. And Nessun, have we set a meeting date for when Mr. King is going to be presenting to administration? Okay. Yeah, David King presented to us and he will be presenting to all of administration on how it works and what you can do and the tools you can use with it. And council is invited to join us in on that session once we have a meeting scheduled, which hopefully will be fairly soon. I think it was nice to go through budget. Yeah, it was interesting to see all the projects that are going to be starting to come forward, I think. And we worked through a lot of organizational stuff, which is nice to see that operations will be carrying on like normal. And with the Wildrose School Division, we have been doing a lot of projects with the school bus hub and the Aurora Bus Loop coming up. And to continue our partnership, they were just as eager as we were, so it was good. We did have the Fire Hall Open House, which was very well attended. I think they had four hundred and fifty people go through there. The kids were having a blast. They were running every wish direction through the house with smoke in it and checking out the boat. They, it was amazing. The kids were very, very engaged, and so were the adults. So I want to say thank you to the Fire Hall for putting that on as part of their prevention month. And then we finish off the month with our med students that came through town. So they thoroughly enjoyed Drayton Valley. They, a lot of them, only four out of the sixty had ever, like, lived in a rural community, they would call it. A lot of them are from bigger centers, so they had no idea what it's like to see. And they said everyone was super friendly, super nice, it's easy to get around. They, yeah, they had a good time. So I think they'll all be fighting to have internships here in the next couple of years. So, which is good. And other than that, I just wish everyone a happy Halloween.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, Your Worship. As mentioned, on October eighth, we had the joint housing strategy meeting. And I think we all had the courage at that time to address the white elephant in the room and do the adult thing and move forward as opposed to struggling with a committee that really wasn't moving forward at all. So I was pleased to see that through the facilitation of our facilitator that we were able to address some issues and have a strategy for moving forward, even if it meant going in different directions. October ninth, I had my FCSS strategy meeting, which was the strategy meeting for FCSS for the entire upcoming fiscal year. It also was an excellent opportunity for myself as a new board member to understand the role of FCSS in our community. And the new board members that were also present that day are more than eager to serve the community on this committee. And I very much look forward to being part of FCSS and their work this coming year. As mentioned, on October fifteenth, we had the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I think there was just under a hundred people in attendance. Terrence Barg was able to give us a presentation on the Canadian Food Greens Bank. And since his presentation to us at the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, I have seen him twice on TV, it being harvest time in Canada. The Canadian Food Bank is in the spotlight a little bit. So it was just nice to have a personal presentation given to us by Terrence to understand how all the farming communities in Canada, particularly Western Canada, contribute to the health and well-being of people around the world. On the fifteenth, we also had our first budget strategy meeting. And it was Boston Pizza and firefighter team up evening. So I think my neighbors were somewhat taken aback when a big fire truck delivered my supper that night. But it was a great evening to interact with the firefighters and just let them know how much I appreciate, as an individual, the work that they do in our community and the innovative partnerships that they create to raise fire prevention awareness. So great job on that. Again, on the sixteenth of October, we had our second budget strategy meeting. And like Counselor Farrell mentioned, it is very good, especially when we're in slower economic times, to evaluate our budget. We do, of course, do it every year. But this year, we were also able to take in public consultation information and weave that into our budget moving forward. And as a bean counter myself, I actually enjoy this process of working through our annual budget. So October nineteenth, we had the Waste Management Meeting where we reviewed our terms of reference. And a change of terms of reference will be coming to council shortly. And we also discussed the results of our fall cleanup that was taken part of in the first part of October. So our committee does evaluate some of the different work that happens through waste management and public works. And I think we are able, with our change of terms of reference, to focus on some of the strategies that we'll be able to move forward on effectively in the coming year. October night, sorry, twentieth, we did have the meeting with Wildrose School Division. Although we've been having partnerships with projects, we haven't been having many face-to-face meetings with them. And it was good to sit down with them, see some of the new trustees that are on their school board, school division board, and know that they are eager to work with us and the eagerness is reciprocated. And just the other day, I had my further FCSS orientation with the two other new board members. And again, it just helped me to have a deeper understanding of the role of FCSS in our community and the different projects that we work for or work with and the granting process. So it, again, was very effective and helpful for me as a new committee member. So I look forward to all the new things that are happening in the community and also want to mention again that I am very appreciative of the associations that have stepped forward to sign MOUs with our community and look forward to very good results coming out of those MOUs. That's my report.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Counselor Fredrickson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to start off, I am quite excited about the new committees that we have been appointed to or agreed to. I had, as I said before, I had met with Mrs. Vatter as well as Mr. Schuler regarding Brazu Seniors specifically. And it's a community that has a lot going on and I'm excited to be a part of that. Furthermore, I'm very excited also that, to be on the Tourism Committee. And we'll see how that moves forward as well. So I was, that was my very first committee process, so that was excellent. I was a stand-in on the CETC Committee October thirteenth. And that is a fast-paced committee, it has a lot going on. And out of that meeting that we had, we had just talked about the importance of communication, especially with the CETC doors opening up expected early twenty sixteen. As noted before, we all got together there with budget discussions. As noted before, we all got together there with budget discussions. We were able to hear from the administration and operational side of things. I thought it was great getting the feedback from administration. The thing that I found that was awesome was the fact that even across all the departments, without them knowing it, they're all speaking to community sustainability and growth, as well as economic diversity. So it was great to see a lot of the departments meshing, even though it, it wasn't planned, right? So it's great to see that we're all moving in the same direction. And as Counselor Bossert had mentioned, October nineteenth, I was at the Waste Management Committee Meeting. And yes, we, we talked about that terms of reference, so that can be expected to come to council here, we're hoping at the beginning of November. And we also talked about, yeah, our direction, where, where can we go with this committee? And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Fredrickson. I just want to, I'll go through very briefly some items of interest since the last council meeting for myself. October eighth, I had the opportunity with Counselor Long to meet with two representatives from the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers, who were both interested in the state of the oil patch in our community. And they're conducting a tour of, of a variety of communities in order to just get a better sense on the ground of how the industry is doing. October thirteenth, in the morning, I had the opportunity to speak to the grade nine Social Studies class of Christine Heinrich at HW Pickup School and spoke to them about municipal government and, and the election, which of course hadn't happened at that point. Great questions from her class. She, she had them prepped extremely well. And, and I hope I provided great answers. We'll, we'll see. October thirteenth as well, in the evening, of course, the Mayor's Advisory Committee Meeting. It's great to get input from that group of, group of community members on issues. We talked about budget and the budgetary process in particular. We talked about economic development and traffic-related matters to a great extent. The fifteenth, of course, has, has been referred to, the prayer breakfast, which was attended, I guess, to about the same extent as last year. We, I, I think those who attend find it very uplifting and a, a great opportunity for community from different walks of life to come together in, in fellowship. And of course, budget meetings on the fifteenth and sixteenth, I won't say much more about those, because those are ongoing. The twentieth, Mr. Deal and I had a, what appeared to be a very fruitful, productive meeting with some government representatives in, in Edmonton in relation to the CETC. And on the twenty-fourth, of course, the, I was honored to attend and bring greetings to the Physician Recruitment and Retention Committees Dinner, as they hosted some sixty students. It was a, it was an extraordinary turnout and, and a very enthusiastic bunch. So that was a great initiative of the committee and we look forward to future initiatives of, of that type. Just in reference to the last council meeting and the, the remarks around reports for the AUMA Convention, my report is done. It is not in the minutes, because it needs to be approved, but it'll be in the minutes of the next meeting, I assure you.
It hasn't been approved, has it though?
It's done. I have confidence that, that it'll be, it's, it's already in its final form, I just don't know it yet. Yeah. I want to, just before I, before I end this, this meeting, I want to introduce two guests who've joined us just now, Councilors Tracy Melnick and Joan McNabb from Parkland County. And they're here, of course, to celebrate the execution of the MOU, which was approved earlier in today's meeting. And we'll, we will now adjourn the meeting and carry on. So can I get a motion to adjourn? Counselor Long, all in favor? Let's carry. Thank you.